We're standing to say the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like to stay standing, we'll say a quick invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Lord, we come before you tonight, and as always, we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your love, your grace, your forgiveness, and most of all, thank you for allowing us to be imperfect. We're going to try to make our way through this agenda as best we can tonight, but we realize that we are not perfect, and we are going to try to make the best decisions that we can for the city of Shenandoah, and we appreciate everybody that's come together in that effort. Pray these things in your son's name and all God people said.
Amen.
All right, well, good evening, everybody. Go Astros, right? I'm sure this is where everybody wanted to be tonight. That's why they call it public service, by the way. Okay, we're going to move right into item five, which is Citizens Forum, and I only had one person sign up to speak. That was Mr. David McMullin. And David, come on up. You've got three minutes, and I'm going to hold you two, and I'm going to run you off if you go past. Just kidding, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council. Hope everyone is well tonight. Go Astros. I'm here under duress because I want to watch the Astros. My wife Sherri says to tell you, oh, she's recovering from yesterday's surgery. I understand on the agenda tonight is information regarding the building of a new townhouse project in the city of Shenandoah, and I understand from what I've read that the request is that the contractor wants to build it using wood siding construction. And I want to let you know that I have an opinion about that, and for a reason. I moved here from California, the land of stucco homes, in 1989. I got to live in a brick home for the first time in my life, and I'll tell you what, it was a substantial home. But one of the things about it was it had some wood siding. It had the masonite wood siding on the one and a half walls, and it took a tremendous amount of maintenance. When we moved into the home that we have now, 10 years ago, it was all brick at my demand. But there are houses in the neighborhood that are half-brick and half-siding. Some are half-stucco or part-stucco. And there is one of note that I pay attention to, my neighbor, who stucco doesn't do well in this kind of weather. It molds, it mildews, turns green, and then it turns black, and his head is painted three times since 2010. So I'm opposed to stucco exterior. I'm opposed to wood because wood won't hold up against the elements as well. And one of the things that I do not want to see is tenement housing in Shenandoah, and I know that that's not the intended purpose of the contractor. But all you have to do is turn on your television at 10 o'clock at night in the city of Houston, and you'll watch wood-sided tinder boxes going up, one after the other, almost monthly. And that puts people at risk. It puts families at risk. And we don't need... You can let off the bucket button. I'm leaving. But thank you very much. I just wanted to express my opinion. By the way, speaking of wood, there's one more new fence going up in my neighborhood, less than 10 years. So wood is not the answer either. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move from item five and item six. And obviously, as y'all know, if you didn't get a chance to speak in this forum, we'll have a second one. Item six, Council inquire, anybody got anything right now? Okay, we'll wait until later then. So item seven will be an update and discussion from inter-gi representatives, and this is an update only.
Thank you for having me. Let me just say, I'm happy to finally be here talking about construction projects and not outages, so it's good for us and good for the residents. And this will go pretty quickly. So when I was here last time, we talked about some of the projects we had in the works, some of the different things we've been working on, so I want to give a quick update on all the different projects we've been working on. So if you all remember, we had the rebuild from Holly Hill to Wellman Road was about two-thirds of a mile of a complete rebuild, all the poles, all the wires. We've been working on that for a couple of weeks now. You've probably seen our contractors out there. Hopefully, they've been doing a good job notifying customers when they're in their yards and working around the neighborhood. So our anticipated completion is about six weeks. We're trying to get it done the week before Christmas so we're not impacting the holidays for everybody. So we're on pace for that schedule, and we'll keep updates to the city as the project keeps going, if there's any delays or anything changes as far as the schedule goes. The second piece was the walkdown we did. Last time, I talked about the northern section that we just completed. We finished the southern section in September, and some of the findings from that, we had, and a lot of y'all have probably seen, there used to be a leaning pole right next to Denny's. We've gone ahead and replaced that pole. It had some issues with us, we replaced that. There was also a main, what we call junction pole in the southern section that had some minor damage. We're going to get that replaced in November. Replace the pole, reframe it, get everything built to our new specs. And then we also found five additional poles in the southern section that had been previously repaired. We're just going to go ahead and replace those poles, rebuild everything on all those locations. So we're on pace to have everything done by the end of the year, like we originally talked about. And like I said, everything's been going smooth, haven't had many complaints at all from citizens, from... I know we had a little bit of a permitting issue with the city, but we're working through that as well, so so far, so good. Feedback from, I think outages have gotten better lately since we've been doing some of this work. We finished our vegetation work. I think it's been pretty positive so far. But that's all I got. Trying to get everybody out of here quickly so they can go see the game, so.
So I know that y'all met with Kathy, and we haven't had a chance to visit about it, and I know that tonight was mostly talking about the projects there in the valley that we had already discussed, but when will we have a presentation that will go into more detail, the layout and the cost and the assumptions for that Wellman Loop project?
For the Wellman? So we've got our consultant now doing the full designs on two different estimates for that Wellman Loop. So we should have that in two to three weeks.
Two to three weeks?
Yes.
So maybe by the December meeting? We might be able to...
Yeah, that was our goal. And I think the November meeting was...
The 13th.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we should have, we're hoping to have it by the...
That's what I meant to say.
Yeah, by the November meeting.
Okay, perfect.
Because we want to try to get some of that work done in 2019 as well, so.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, we'll move to item eight, which is, I'm just going to read it. City Council, sitting as the Board of Adjustments, will hear the appeal of PHSH Construction LLL. The appeal asks the Board of Adjustments to reverse the decision of the city's building official to deny five residential new home permits. PHSH wants to build homes with James Hardy siding instead of 60% masonry siding. Do we have some representatives from PHSH Construction?
We do. Ian, Faria, and Joseph Anderson, on behalf of the developer, PHSH LLC.
I thought it was, I've never heard of an LLL, but that's what it had on the agenda.
Did you bring it up?
Yes.
For the ease of the council, we have put together some materials that may be of assistance in reviewing some of the issues that we wanted to discuss. But if you could just wait one quick second, I'd like, I think it would be appropriate.
Could you go ahead and restate your name?
My first name is Ian, last name is Faria. This is Joseph Anderson. We're with Bradley Aaron Bolt Cummings Law Firm, and we represent PHSH LLC, the developer, at issue here.
Does the city attorney have a copy of this? Do you have a copy of this, Bill?
No.
Can you give that copy to... Thank you. Maybe Bill and Kathy can share that? Thank you. We're not going to read this whole book tonight, right?
We don't expect you to.
Okay, just checking.
We thought it'd be materials that may be of relevance and assist you in your position to see it against the Board of Adjustment.
Okay.
Can we proceed?
Yes, absolutely.
I think most of you know why we're here tonight, and thank you very much for being here while the Astros are now playing, so we'll try and make this quick. We're here tonight because of HB 2439. I think most of you are familiar with what that says and generally the effect that it has on a city council or a municipality's ability to regulate building materials that are used and building methods that are used. So there are three reasons generally why we think this appeal should be granted and the decision of the community development district should be reversed. One of them, the first one, is that there's no agreement at all between PHSH and the city regarding masonry. They, with the passage of HB 2439, the city is now violating the law by trying to enforce the masonry requirement. And the third reason is that PHSH has and is continuing to offer a compromise that should hopefully address everybody's concerns. So to address the gentleman's comments earlier, the materials that PHSH has proposed using is a cementous fiber siding, it's not wood, and PHSH would continue to, on the front elevations and the rear elevations, stick with the 60% masonry content requirement. What we're really talking about is the side elevations on each of these units that are less than nine feet apart. And the problem there is that obviously they can't necessarily be seen, and so with the passage of HB 2439, it's our belief that the city is no longer able to enforce the masonry requirement because it's now void and unenforceable.
Just for clarification, I want to make sure I heard you right, which is your appeal is stating that y'all have only asked for those side of the structures, not the front or the rear. You haven't submitted any request for permit appeal where the front or the rear was non-masonry? Is that what you're saying?
I don't recall the exact elevations off the top of my head that were submitted for adjustment originally, after the original permits were issued.
But that's what we're talking about, is an appeal of that denial.
Correct, and we feel like we can go forward simply on that alone, but we believe that as trying to be a partner with the city, that it is incumbent upon us to try and find a compromise that this Board of Adjustment is more, it has the power to rule and favor. So as a way to compromise, the builder, developer was absolutely willing to maintain the front and rear elevations, which is what people will actually see in the masonry. The side that they will not see would be requested to be a mix, but mostly of the cementous board, hardy plank type material for a variety of reasons. One, it actually does make it much easier to maintain and to upkeep the homes because that material does not generally require replacement but around the 50th or 60th year of use. And by that time, we would likely have gone through one, two, three, four homeowners, hopefully not that happens. And more importantly, it's not going to be viewed from the city streets or get away from the intent of the design of the neighborhoods and the intent of design and look of the entire communities of Shenandoah.
So there are only two written agreements between PHSH and the city. There's a developers' agreement, which was executed in July 22, 2015, and there's an agreement regarding detention. Neither of these agreements, they're at tabs one and two of the binders, neither of these agreements mention anything about masonry or the masonry requirement at all. The developers' agreement was dealing with horizontal construction and infrastructure issues. The agreement regarding detention, as you're probably aware, is about the east side detention pond. The PDD, PDD 11, is not an agreement, and even if it were an agreement, it does not say anything about masonry either. All it says is that PHSH is required to comply with the city's ordinances. But now that HB 2439 has been passed, the masonry requirement is now void and is no longer part of the city's ordinances. So even if the PDD were in agreement, there still would not be an agreement between PHSH and the city about the masonry requirement.
That's in your opinion, correct?
Yeah.
That's what the document says. It's on the page, just put the document say. There is no agreement between PHSH and the city and Shenandoah with respect to anything other than those two items that are written and signed off by us. An ordinance that y'all have passed is not an agreement that has been entered into by any other entity. It's a unilateral decision by the city, the city's absolutely entitled to do, and we have no objection to that whatsoever. The issue here is the Texas Association of Builders, National Association of Home Builders, and a bunch of other groups lobby the Texas Legislature to change the ability of municipalities such as yourself from enforcing and dictating what building materials could be used. That's in essence what happened, and here, unfortunately, y'all didn't have a contract or have anything else that prevents the builders, developers from doing so. You do have that ability on a going-forward basis to do it by contract, which I'm very well aware that y'all are exercising and doing at this time. I think this issue is going to be very limited to probably just this one developer in the city of Shenandoah right now. I don't anticipate we'll have this issue on a going-forward basis with anybody else because you already have the ability to prevent it from happening by making sure that these issues are resolved by written agreements signed off in advance. The issue here is you just don't have one. And that's why this is a unique situation, probably a one-time-only situation.
In the agreement that we're, I don't think the PowerPoint's working, so we'll just go through this. The agreement that we're talking about is at tab six, and if you remember, this was part of the council's agenda on October 16 of this year, and it's dealing with the validation, connections, development. There was a variance that was requested, and the agreement specifically says that, for example, the city wants to be assured that each elevation of construction maintains exterior coverage of at least 80%, and then the agreement requires the developer to agree to comply to that, with that requirement. This would be possibly an agreement that will probably work in the future, but the problem is that there's not an agreement like that in this case because the PDD, as you can see, it's at tab A, does not mention PHSH anywhere by name. It doesn't say it's an agreement. PHSH isn't agreeing to do anything in the PDD and...
But when you signed the developers' agreement, you signed an agreement that said this agreement is under the conditions of PDD 11. I mean, that's...
Which is specifically built for this development.
Correct, yes, that's right.
So you said, "I'm going to make an agreement that agrees to follow all the rules under this document." Well, this document listed everything, including a reference to our then-current rules. I mean, rules didn't change, IDC.
Well, there's no, in this case, there's no developers' agreement like that at issue. The only two agreements are the detention agreement and the developers' agreement that deals with infrastructure. It specifically says on the first page that it's just dealing with streets, roads, and utilities. And that agreement also does not mention the PDD. It doesn't mention, for example, the portion of the PDD that the city relied on in denying the revised building plans is Section 1B of the conditions, and it says that the city must be in compliance with the most recently current additions of any adopted codes and ordinances. And so normally, yes, that would be in a developers' agreement, but there's not an agreement like that in this case. All that there is is the PDD. But again, even if the PDD were a written agreement that was signed by PHSH and PHSH specifically agreed to comply with all of the current ordinances, what we're saying is that because of HB 2439, the current ordinances do not include the masonry requirement because that's now void as a matter of law. And the Section 3,000.002 is right here, and it's at, I believe, tab four in the binder. And I think y'all generally know what it says, but it prohibits government entities from adopting or enforcing a charter ordinance order provision that limits the use of a building product that's approved by the National Model Code, like the International Residential Code, and it prevents or prohibits governmental entities from establishing a standard that's more stringent than the International Residential Code, for example. And so the materials that PHSH is trying to use or proposed using are approved by to comply with the International Residential Code. It's at the tab seven at the very end. There's a report from the International Code Council saying that this specific material is approved. And so that's kind of what it boils down to, and section, it's now Section 3,000.002 of the government code prohibits governmental entities like the city of Shenandoah from enforcing ordinances or regulations exactly like the masonry requirement. And so, for example, the Texas Municipal League specifically addressed this issue, and I understand a few of y'all went to the recent TML conference, and the exact example that they gave is when a city has, through an IRC amendment or any other regulation, mandated a percent masonry requirement, and that's therefore preempted because it's more stringent than the International Residential Code. And so that's why we are just asking for the city council to just comply with the law, which now says, unfortunately, I know that nobody likes it, every city in Texas is furious about it, and we understand that, and that's why we're trying to propose something that we think you will like. And so the 18 permits that were submitted are in tab D. 13 of those permits are in the live-work area of PDD 11, and because of the timing, PHSH was forced to move forward with those. So that's why we're asking the city council to review the denial of just five of those permits. But the bigger issue is there's, I believe, about 90 more units that have to be constructed still, and so...
Has he sold any of these?
No.
Nothing's been sold?
Counsel, no.
Why does the website say that he sold out of the first section?
The first 18?
Sorry, all 18 have been sold.
Okay, well, that's different. So didn't have problems selling them, all masonry?
Well, the problem is, I believe that the goal for this project was to provide affordable housing to people in this community, and that's why PHSH made the decision to build on the east side of I-45, which I believe the city thinks is a huge benefit because now the David Memorial Drive extension is there, and it's more development for the city. And if, you know, we can't tell, we don't know if, they may all fly off, you know, the shelves, so to speak, and they may all sell right away.
It seems like it has with, I mean, with all masonry under the current design. We've already got 18 units that are already laid out to be masonry.
They seem to have liked that 80% masonry.
And that's why we want to keep that on the front and rear elevations, and maybe that, who knows why, but maybe those sold quickly because they're in the live-work area. We don't know. And so that's the concern, but regardless...
Aren't five of those outside of the live-work area?
Those are the five that we're trying, that we're here discussing, I believe, on the renewed permit request.
So those five have not sold there?
Those, yeah. Four, yeah, four are going to be model homes that are going to be the basis for what prospective home buyers will come and walk through to make selections and make a determination as to whether or not this community is one that they want to move into. And while I appreciate that, you know, the sales may be wonderful, unfortunately, in this house bill, whether or not they sell or not is not really truly relevant. What's relevant is the fact that they're...
But it's relevant to your lawsuit.
It is, it is, and it's relevant to my lawsuit for purposes of what we're trying to accomplish on the overall plan, but it's not relevant as to the analysis of what not this house bill has made void of the very ordinance that y'all have passed. And there's going to be no judge, Judge Bates is not going to consider would not be sold home. Judge Bates is very adamant that we reach a resolution and wants this to be good for everybody because she considered the tax base increase that the city will get would be positive, the growth of that area by the stadium, which is a swampland right now, where I get to go every Friday night to go watch my girls and to go watch the football team. It's a dead area. You have the opportunity to create something really spectacular there next to those apartment complexes and that, and right now, that's not happening.
I take a little bit of offense to that, by the way. I don't, I take a little bit of offense to that. It's not a dead area. We have an Evans Hotel coming in over there right now. We have Metro Park Development. Yeah, I was about to say, I mean, I appreciate your presentation. Let's be real careful about how we approach the city of Shenandoah.
Well, I'm a person of Shenandoah, someone who's lived here for 20 years. I don't live in Shenandoah, but I lived two miles away for an awful long time. I take immense amount of pride on this area.
Good, I'm glad. Doesn't sound like it, but I'm glad.
I also speak the way that's important. I'm not going to be up here and BS y'all. The reality is that that area has gone fallow for a long time, and you've got a builder that's gone in here and wants to build something spectacular for y'all, and the reality is that he's got a product, that's something that thinks he can make even better, make more affordable, and help it fly off the shelves even more.
Okay.
And that's what we're trying to accomplish here. And the thing is that I can appreciate, because it's not my first time in front of a city council before, I can appreciate the position of what you want to take.
Do we have any more facts that we can review rather than someone's opinion? And I appreciate your opinion, but that's not what we're reviewing tonight. I mean, it's your opinion of our city, I'm sorry, that's not what's at stake here. Do we have more in the presentation that we can take a look at that gets down to the nuts and bolts of this?
The facts are very simple.
Okay.
If you look at the email in tab E, the reason why the permits were denied was because of the masonry requirement.
So basically, you're taking permitted properties that were before the bill passed or went into effect, and you want to backpedal all the way back to the beginning, and so that's your premise?
Our premise...
That it's all inclusive now because the bill passed?
Our premise is that we want the houses to look uniform, and especially since these are model houses, but that's sort of beside the point because it doesn't change the fact that the masonry requirement is now gone.
But you're saying it's a financial burden.
Sorry?
You're saying it's a financial...
Your claim is it's financial.
That was part of the lawsuit for purposes of the temporary injunction. We've pretty much already lost that. The statute is very clear that if a city...
So I received a letter, an email, last evening
Yep.
from Mr. Crawford. This is a letter dated October 29, and he states, this is what he states verbatim. "The way we budget our projects is that profit is set up as a variable. The more the project costs, the more profit we make. Trying to offer housing affordability is not about profit for us. It's about wanting to have a successful project in the marketplace." So my question would be, if housing affordability is not about profit, could you explain what a successful project in the marketplace is for him?
Well, considering I've never seen that email, no.
Well, you better discuss it with your client because he sent it to everybody.
Yeah, we got a copy.
Very good. Well, you know, it's his company.
You can see where we, but you can see our trouble is it kind of contradicts, I mean, literally contradicts the lawsuit in that we can't, that, you know, it's not financially profitable to do that, and then yet we all get an email that says, "If I increase my costs, then my profit goes up and I can make more money." That's, well, which one is it? Is it, is it because the cost goes up, you can't make money, or if the cost goes up, you make more money? Those are in complete contradiction to each other. Those are in complete contradiction to each other.
Well, yeah, I would assume that if your costs go up, you're not going to be profitable necessarily unless you're able to have a sales point that's higher. Obviously, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, that's basic economics.
Yeah, right.
So...
And I can appreciate, you know, your explanation and argument on the east side and, you know, with Mr. Crawford coming into the city and wanting to build, and the city was very favorable to that. In fact, not only did we, from the get-go, begin to enter into agreements and arrangements for him that we had not with anybody else, we amended those several times with him. He, which I kind of take offense to you, because in his email last night, he says those were minor changes. How about we just repeal all those minor changes? Because those are all ordinances as well. If those are minor changes and it had no impact on his project, what if we just repeal those items in our next meeting?
Well, again, I think that's a great question. That's not what...
I don't think that would be feasible as a partner.
Well, I mean, that's...
But it needs to be a win-win, and we're not at a win-win.
I agree with that, but, you know, I guess my kind of problem with it is that then we, you know, again, if that was something that was wanted to be accomplished, then we could have done that at the beginning with an actual real agreement. I don't know that repealing infrastructure that's going to be beneficial to not only this builder, but the city and other builders, and those deals, I don't know that's a good idea, but I don't sit in your chair and say I don't know.
I'm not saying that that's a good idea, and I don't think that that's a good... I don't think that's being a good partner on our side, but I'm saying that the comments that your client is making and some of the arguments that you're posing to us and I really leaves a lot of questions. I think that, you know, in the letter that was written August 9th, 2019, there was another argument that was made in which Mr. Crawford claims that they spoke to other municipalities, and those municipalities had agreed, you know, not to pursue any of their IDCs. So part of the question I have with that, too, is, one, what other municipalities did you speak to? Who did you speak to at that municipality? Was there a builder's agreement involved?
Well, I mean, I guess we could do that, but that would be getting away from the facts that would be relevant to this. And the issue here for us is that there was a reapplication for adjustment to five permits. It was denied. We believe that that is in contraversion of the law, and we were asking you, as the city council, which sits as the board of adjustments, to actually recognize the law that was passed, recognize that the adjustment that's being sought relates to permits on a going-forward basis for this one community only, and make a ruling on that. As far as what other municipalities are doing, I...
That was part of your argument, that's why I'm...
Well, I can't, I mean, I personally, as a member of the, as the general council of the Greenpeace and Build Association, can tell you all about the municipalities up in Dallas, because all, they're all fighting this as much as they can. I don't know any municipality that's not necessarily fighting it, but others have taken positions. But again, we're getting outside, and I don't want to do that at all. But you've asked me the question, so I want to, like I said, I think we're getting away from it. Each one's kind of treating it differently, but I think here is a pretty, as I mentioned, a unique scenario.
So let's bring it back to this project in specific, then. Again, back to the question that I asked that wasn't answered. If we're looking at housing affordability and if it's not about profit, but more about a successful project in the marketplace, can you explain what a successful marketplace, what a successful project in the marketplace means to you?
I think PHSH originally thought that if these houses could be offered for somewhere in the mid $200,000 range, that this would be a very successful project. But as the cost of building materials goes up, the price point necessarily has to go up, and I think that's kind of what the point may have been, is that if it's more expensive, then there's, I guess, a higher price point, but that's not what they wanted to do here. They wanted to keep them in the affordable range so that people could afford to buy them, and that would be a successful project.
What was the price point that you proposed when you went for financing with the bank? What did you tell them your target price was? Because I know you had to have something in mind.
We can't...
I know to build a single house, that they wanted to know everything down to the last doorknob, what was going to be in the building? So I'm just kind of curious what price point and profitability you had in mind when you actually initialized the project.
We don't have that information here.
Likewise, now that you're proposing to use the siding, how much more affordable are these houses going to be versus what you originally had in mind? Can you share that?
Are we reducing the price based upon the material that we'll be using? If this is approved, then?
Generally, overall, there's going to be a price reduction because, overall, subject to market conditions. Obviously, that's an issue. I think the more pressing issue is, is that when you have a cementous floor material that's used on the sides, you're cutting down on the overall maintenance for these homes. As you all probably know, whether it's hard-coated stucco, synthetic stucco, any type of that masonry requires a minimum annual inspection, is much more subject to water penetration, rock deterioration, mold infestation. You generally do not have that as a result of the cementous floor, because of the very nature of the material, vapor barriers, and the remaining build that goes on for that size. So what you're in essence doing is making it much more significantly easy for homeowners to come in and be able to maintain the entire exterior cladding system with little, no cost, because you have fewer penetrations, you have fewer penetrations, you have fewer maintenance requirements that are required to be performed on an annual basis. So that in and of itself makes the homes more affordable, more maintainable, and then you don't have, is this other gentleman, that gentleman discussing about the wood rock, discussing about the ongoing maintenance. I mean, masonry, quite frankly, the type of stucco and synthetic stucco that exists was simply not created for the bulkheads. The humidity that we have here is significantly detrimental, the high heat loads that we have, and the heat loads that come in through the attic and into the building are troubling. This actually, this compromise proposal actually reduces, in many respects, those items to decrease the possibility and potential for homeowners to have those type of surprise costs and issues that create that we end up having to litigate all day long. And so that's one of the very strong benefits from our position that this community will achieve, that others do not. Because if you've ever had to deal with a water penetration mold issue on a stucco home, you know it's basically, you most of the time have to take it back down to a minimum of the lap, and then on the interior, down the studs. So it's really, it's a problem in this area. It's great California, not California, it's in Colorado. It's great in other drier climates, but just this area is just not fantastic, and it's just because of the humidity for a while.
Do you have new elevations? Do we have any drawings of the new elevations of all the...
Yes, I thought they were included in the binder.
They are, there are some in the binder, which is what I was about to... The point I was about to make was, is I think I'm more confused now than I was before we started.
It's like a whole different proposal than what was rejected, so...
Well, one of the reasons why I asked the question, because, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Joseph.
Joseph. Joseph, at the very beginning, stated that we were only talking about the sides of the structures and not the front or the rear, and that those weren't staying masonry, and then yet, in y'all's proposal, it shows the front and the rear being changed to the siding.
Yes, sorry, let me...
Well, that's just one example. We have contradicting emails, we have a, you know, we have an email that states that I can make more money if my cost goes up. We have an email that says if my cost goes up, it's not financially viable. We have what we think is, you know, some give on our part. We think, you know, obviously, y'all tonight have stated that you don't feel like it was. I'm just now, tonight, for the first time hearing that a PDD is not an agreement. I don't know what that means. I'd like to consult my city attorney on that, but that sounds like if a PDD is not an agreement, that we're not bound to the PDD either, correct? So I think where I'm going with this is, like I said, I'm more confused now than I was when we started. If my suggestion would be that we probably table this tonight, we look over our binders. Can y'all send us the PowerPoint? Can you email that to us?
We'd be happy to do that.
Email us the PowerPoint.
We just need to have the appropriate addresses. We don't want to give you a state inappropriate...
Sure. I think we all have cards up here.
Or I can just send it to Mr. Farabee?
There you go.
There you go.
Have him send it out, yeah.
And that Farabee's...
I think one last component, yeah, I think one last component, because there's such an emphasis on cost and profit and financial viability. As Ron brought up, there was a bank involved in this at some point. I think something that would be nice to know is, okay, if you don't feel like 60% is the number, go back to the drawing board, go to your calculator, and figure out what is the number? Is it 57? Is it 56? Is it 55? Is it 54? I mean, where does it become, regardless of whether or not you think an ordinance is legal or not? If we're going to talk about profitability and financial stability and whether or not this project would even be viable, then I'm just curious, where is that number? What, obviously, there's a number somewhere, right? So what is that number that makes it where it's the breakpoint? It would be or would not be financially viable? And that would be, that would be something that it would at least be worth talking about, right? If we're going to start talking about considerations and give and take? Just a thought.
Well, I can speak to that. We have, I feel as though, and I chaired the P&amp;Z board there for a good while through a lot of this, and honestly, I feel like we have, you know, given and, you know, done a lot of give and take with this project for quite some time. And I mean, here we are again, we're, you know, right back to having to do the same thing, and that, like you said, it is kind of confusing. There's a lot of different information being thrown around here. But I mean, that PDD has been manipulated many, many times, trying to help the developer move forward.
And we have, in goodwill. I mean, overhanging the easements, the distance between the dwellings.
Is there anything that we had agreed to do that we haven't fulfilled?
I don't believe so. And just kind of to clear things up...
So we followed the letter of the agreement and the spirit of the agreement?
Not agreed, yeah.
So we've done everything we promised to do in our agreement?
Well, you followed the ordinance. We would agree with that, okay? As far as the developer's agreement or the other actual written agreement, yeah, those were absolutely performed. We did our part, he did your part.
Absolutely. Actually, you have not done your part. You have not done your part. You're still building, are you not?
Yes, we are.
Okay, then you haven't finished. You haven't done your part.
Well, I'm talking about the two specific agreements.
Right, I'm talking about the two specific agreements, too.
I'm not talking about the balance of the construction.
I guess one of the things that concerned me was from the letter that I got last night, is it said that until it was spoken by me that there was a 60% masonry requirement that had already been conceded from the 80%, it was the first time that y'all had heard about it, but when you changed the zoning from commercial to residential, that automatically got you the 60%. I don't know why you guys didn't understand that you even had that. You didn't even understand that you had the 60%.
No, the permits were, and we requested to submit them at 80%, and which was done, and they were...
I'm just saying, I'm referring to yesterday's letter.
And that's what we're still, again, you know, is trying to make sure we reach a compromise and put forth a good foot for you all, is that instead of requesting that the entire group be re-permitted for a different cladding system, we very much want to maintain the 60% on the front elevation and the rear. And at this point, if the council would consider it, we're only talking about the east and west elevations that are not going to be seen by virtually anyone other than the intention if someone walks in between that.
So the ones that would be, so the units that would be corners or facing street side would be stucco then?
That's correct. And that, this, all the discussion about profit and the affordability, that was us trying to be reasonable. Our argument today is that the decision of the community development district should be reversed, because it's illegal. It violates section 3,000.002 very clearly.
But again, that's fine. That's your opinion, we may have a different opinion.
If you want to follow the letter and the spirit of your agreement, yeah.
Well, it's also oral. I mean, every time Tim talked, every P&amp;Z meeting, every time, it was always 60%. Until, it was earlier this summer, it was the first time, well, even that was still going to be 60%, which is the fake stucco. So tonight, when he made that application, was the first time in the entire history that there's ever been a mention of using anything less than 60%. So that's a, you know, that's an honorable thing. That's a verbal commitment. When you say you're going to do something, and you come before this council, and you come before the citizens of the city, and you say you're going to do something, and we make concessions, that's what we expect.
We made the concessions based upon those agreements. And now you're not wanting to fulfill your...
And the first chance you get to overturn it, you tried to turn it over.
Hold on just a minute, sure. It comes back, again, from the finance perspective and the philosophy that he's bringing forth is that, you know, that this creates a burden on the project. Obviously, if you're selling it, it's not creating a burden. But more so, I think that just the spirit of the fact that every time, you know, something doesn't go his way, he wants to make a change. Let's change this, let's change that. And it's been fairly consistent. I've only been a councilman for three years, and I think this is the fourth time I've seen him before us. Some of these gentlemen have been on P&amp;Z and have been on the dais longer than I have, and they'll tell you that that's probably fairly consistent. That's very inconsistent for every other builder and developer. I think there's a lot of questions still to be answered, that I don't think you guys have the answers to. He does, because he's sent us letters and made some specific opinions, and while we may not be able to expand on those tonight, at some point, I sure would like to. I think that part of the confusion, and if you're going to bring plans back to us, let's make sure that they're consistent all the way through. Part of the confusion is that on the plans that were originally submitted for permits back on August 29th, those showed hardy siding. On October 3rd, the plans that were submitted to us showed groove siding. There's a big difference between those two projects. So if we can get some consistency across the board, that would be great, and I can promise you, anything that we do will be in writing. And whether that's a total denial or that comes to a compromise, I could tell you that this council, bar none, is willing to listen and comes with an open mind, but at the same time, there comes a point that somebody's just a taker, and I think we've reached that point.
Well, just come to us with everything. I mean, that's, like I said, from the email last night, to the proposal we got, to literally what you showed up tonight, is you're not really appealing what was denied, but you're making a second proposal, which is, so this is kind of like a big, a whole bunch of different stuff going on here.
Let me be very clear. We're sticking to, and we've made the appeal based on the drawings that were rejected. The purpose of the drawings tonight was to give an alternative so that you, that you as the board of adjustments could say, all right, we're going to reject what you did, and we're going to live with that decision. But here's the builder coming back again and saying, here's an alternative, that you do have the power...
I'm certainly willing to take a look at this, but obviously, in two minutes, I can't...
I can appreciate you trying to clear it up.
Okay.
You know, the hearing we're here upon is on the ones that we've already done were rejected.
Okay.
Okay? So we're moving forward on that. We're trying to give you an alternative that we thought would be something that would be attractive to you all, that would actually take away from what we permitted and give back to what's something that we think you all would like.
Okay.
So if that was unclear, that was not the intent.
I got you, okay.
That was not the intent.
I appreciate that.
We're trying to come forward with another alternative that we thought was much more in line with, again, maybe the intent and what the parties had talked about and where we were, and what would be acceptable. That's kind of the intent of that, is another movement towards hopefully a compromise.
If I can comment, your original proposed front and rear was substantially masonry product. The proposed front and rear is much, much reduced masonry product. So it's a new reduced front and rear.
Correct.
Okay. I think, I know in talking with one city council member, and what we heard... Okay. I think, I know in talking with one city council member and what we heard tonight, what's concerning to the city is we want a successful project. We want a project where Mr. Carpenter, Tim Crawford sells everything. And it's wonderful for the city for years to come. And the only history we have right now are the 18 units, which were 80% masonry. They sold before they were finished. And so I think from the city's standpoint, we're troubled that now you want to change this, that change what you already agreed to with the city and which has proven to be successful to a, to a product that's far less appealing. And then you're asking the, the city to take a chance on that. Why? I mean, we want you to be successful, and we know 18 units have sold before they're finished that with 80% masonry. We know that's successful.
And, and that's why to accommodate that kind of opinion and concern, we put forth the other option, which was, and I don't try to repeat myself over and over again, but the front rear elevations would be consistent with the original ordinance that says for these types of units must be 60% masonry, et cetera. And that's why the compromise would be only the east and west elevations that, again, are not viewable from the street or from the back unless you actually walk in between them. And that would be the, what we would propose would be the compromise between the two that we thought might be very appealing so that we can stay forward with what we think is going to be a very successful project. We hope, we hope this.
All right. Thank you very much. In light of this new information, and given the time it's going to take us to digest this, I, we'll make a motion to table this.
Okay, do we have a motion by Councilman McLeod to table? We have a second by Councilman Brott. Do we have any discussion? Only thing that I'll say is I'd, I'd love to have an email to PowerPoint.
Yes.
We have agreed to provide evidence to Mr. Farabee, either tonight or tomorrow morning.
And anything else that you can think of that would help us in our decision? I know we've talked a lot of numbers tonight. We've talked a lot about the rest of the project. And you, I'm not saying you have to, I'm just saying anything else you can think of that would be a good idea to send, that would help council with their, you know, as they consume this information and try to come up with a, a good decision. Listen, the more information, the better, is the way I look at it. So totally up to y'all, but that would just be my only request. So if no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 to table the project. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine, which is discussion and possible action to approve an RFP for professional services for a destination market analysis.
Counsel, as you may recall from the budget workshop, approval was given to allocate funds for this market destination analysis study, and that's what this RFP is for. Our CBB director is here. If you have questions for him, he spent a lot of time drafting this RFP, and the city attorney has also reviewed it and approved it. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer. And just to, you know, I know it's been a while since budget, but the goal of this study, it's much, much broader than just one facility. It looks at the entire market, the entire city, what we can, what direction will be determined for the future of the CBB and the tourism.
This is essentially the same thing we talked about in budget workshop then?
Correct.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the RFP.
I have a motion by Councilman McLeod to approve.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Brott. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 10, discussion and possible action to adopt revision to the sign ordinance.
I move that we open this for discussion only.
I second that.
As, as there are probably some, not just changes that need to be made, but also that there's some other considerations and people that we need to speak to. I know the city has a church and a school that we probably need to, I know there's part of this ordinance in the possession activity that talks about signage for schools in specific, but doesn't incorporate a church.
So I have, I have a motion to make this a discussion only item by Councilman Fletcher. I have a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to make this a discussion only item passes 5-0. With that, let's discuss.
If you would like, let me, let me begin. When we looked at the sign ordinance back several months ago, staff and I, Kathy Reyer and Jackie, met with various local businessmen, lots of businesses in our community. And the one thing when we asked about the sign ordinance that we were shocked was people said, "It's really hard to read, but we don't have a problem with it. It's strict, but it's okay." That was Home Depot. Two representatives from Portofino came down. The Portofino people had two comments. One, they said, "We would prefer directional signs." Jackie informed them they could have them. They just didn't know it. And their second comment about the entire sign ordinance was, "When we have a building with seven tenants and two vacancies, your current ordinance only allows us one for lease sign. We would like one per unit." That, by the way, was presented to P&amp;Z, and they certainly agreed with that change. After we talked with, with the business people, and we also talked with realtors, we went in, tried to fix the wording on the sign ordinance. One of the things, we had what we felt was some awkward wording. It was shall do things rather than allowed or not allowed. The second thing was, it was not always clear if you, a sign permit was required for certain types of signs. So for every single sign you'll see in the new sign ordinance, a sign or permit is required or is not. We then went to P&amp;Z. We had a long meeting with P&amp;Z. And you have, I believe, in your agenda pack, a report from P&amp;Z. They made a number of recommendations, and those are in the status report. There were four areas that P&amp;Z said, "We either don't have a strong opinion or we're going to kind of defer to city council." And those four, I'll go over those, were construction signs where we allowed a certain size project, you could have a photograph of your layout or a photograph of your house, limited to 25% of the sign. On larger projects, it was limited to 50%. P&amp;Z had no strong opinion. Some of the members felt like a developer, if he wants to use 60% of his sign in photographs, ought to be able to do so, our site plan. And so others were unclear. So P&amp;Z did not have a firm recommendation to city council on the 25 or 50% of the sign face area being a photograph or a site plan. That was number one. And number two, on off.
Can I interrupt you for a minute, Bill?
Sure.
Would it be okay, as you're talking about these, that we have discussion right behind it so that we don't?
Actually, I think that's ideal. Sure.
Would that be okay?
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. Yeah, I'm fine with that. So you want to discuss that particular part, or you were just bringing?
Well, no, I was bringing up the, after each one, I'm sure there's going to be discussion about each one, and everybody has an opinion, so.
So does anybody have an opinion on the 25 slash 50%?
Well, my only thought is why, why do we have differences?
Yes.
I mean, I, this is one of those like, can we make life, if your sign's this big, 50% is going to be smaller than if your sign's this big. Make it 50%. Everybody's 50%. And I agree, I know there's a bunch of legal stuff we've got to post, so it can't be, there's, there's a limit to how much. I mean, my thought is if you're building a community or construction, it's 50% can be a photograph of it. It shouldn't be like if you're a small community, you can use 25% because that's, makes it even like smaller than.
Yeah.
Almost should be the opposite if it was going to be different, but that's just my thought on the.
I'm not 100% sure why we limit it at all.
Yeah.
Well, I know there's a bunch of legal texts we've got to, they have to put up, so.
Well, they still have to put that on the sign. It's on them. They want to put 25%.
They're marketing. I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess other than the legal text, they wouldn't.
I mean, there's specific things that have to be on their sign.
Right.
You know, if they want to put who it's financed by and all that stuff, it's still going to be on the same sign. So they got to squeeze it all in, so whether they decide.
Fair enough. That's a good point. That's a good point.
Is there some particular reason why we should have a percentage limitation on it?
No one on P&amp;Z understood or knew why there was a 25 or a 50% limit.
So can we just strike the percentage completely?
Yes, we can.
Can we cross-reference that with some other cities, find out what they have, then find out why? Maybe, maybe there's some rabbit holes that we're not thinking about right now.
But I would like to be uniform if, if.
Yes, I would. Make it easy. Okay.
Okay. Item two, that P&amp;Z did not, let's say they had a recommendation on this. That was off-premise signs. The old rule allowed city council.
Could you reference the number from?
Yes, number eight in, in the, I'm, thank you. It's number eight in the sign ordinance status report. It's section 90.6. It had a provision for a developer who had an off-premise sign, just say weekly, for an example, who wanted to direct people to their project. And there was a kind of awkward thing where city council could approve it for three years, and then maybe it would be renewed annually. And the, P&amp;Z thought, "Let's just do something simple. We don't have any big projects. Let's just renew annually." Do away with that kind of awkward wording, and then off-premise signs would have to be renewed annually with the other regulations.
Is there a, obviously we charge a permit fee for the signs, correct?
Yes.
So rather than having to bog down staff with doing something like that annually, if there's not a change to the sign, can it be every two years?
The, the rest of the, it, it can be two years. The rest of the, that's part of the off-premise sign says that when you've reached 80% of, you've sold out 80%, then, then your off-premise sign ends. So P&amp;Z, I don't, don't think was tied up with one year versus two. Just, let's just have a renewing, and once you hit 80%, then we can say, that's.
Take it down.
Yeah, take it down.
So what, what would be the, the trigger, like, what would be a reason for non-renewal?
80%.
So why are we renewing it at all if, if we're going to have a project? I mean, just a project, and you're going to come to whoever, and they're going to get your sign permit, and when you hit 80%, it comes down?
The, the reason, when we talked with P&amp;Z, is really kind of, we don't keep up with the 80% of sales. It would be up to Jackie to check on sales. So when you have the developer come in once a year, you can say, "How much have you sold? Where are you?"
Well, in terms of the fees, what's a sign permit fee?
We, it's one time, right, Jackie?
So they're not charging for renewal, right? For that, for the builders, that temporary sign?
Depending upon if they change the sign, change the visual appearance of the sign or maybe the location of the property of that sign.
I meant for, but for a renewal of, of an existing sign, we wouldn't charge them an additional fee, right?
Sorry, no, there would be, there potentially would be no, no fee for the renewal of the application.
Okay.
But it does give us, it gives us a mechanism too, if a sign looks worn.
Falls out of compliance, yeah.
Right, at the, at the annual renewal process, we could require them to replace the base of that sign.
Okay, as long as we're not charging them a fee, I don't have a problem with having just an annual compliance. I mean, it's going to be a, if everything, if everything's in good shape, the sign's in good shape, and Jackie's happy with it, then, you know, we just stand it and move on as long as, as long as.
I don't, I don't overthink this.
Yeah.
It says here that after the year, the owner shall have seven days to remove the sign. So if we don't address, if we don't address. Unless it's someplace else here. And again, I'm not in a.
It, it's in, it's subpart five.
Right.
So in other words, if you don't renew, then you need to remove the sign. It's in subpart five.
Yeah, Y5?
Yes. And that's a code enforcement, so that it requires the, the developer to come in and ask for a renewal. And if he doesn't, then we're going to tell him that if you don't want to renew, then remove the sign.
And renewal's under another section?
It's four. Uh, let's see. See, in other words, you, you, on a yearly basis, you renew it in subpart four.
Okay.
I see the way it's written. Okay.
I see the way it's worded, okay.
I can reword that to make it a little clearer.
I'm good, I'm good with that being annual. But again, I don't know if we need to, as long as we're not having to pay, again, to maintain the existing sign.
Right.
Okay.
The, the next item was 10, in your summary. Item 10 was routine repairs. Our existing ordinance requires you to replace a sign if you have more than $500 of repairs. Wes Stevens raised this and said, "Hey, guys, you can't do any repair of a sign for $500. That's really, that number's too low." And he recommended a number of 2,500. Other P&amp;Z members were.
Where are we at?
Item 10 on the summary, it would be section 90.13.2. If Chris can bring that up. B. 90.13.2.
Limitation on non-conforming signs.
Is there another way? I mean, I know we, we've looked at this in some other areas. Is there another way to look at it? You know, a percentage of the signs needing to be repaired? I know we do this when signs, you know, the, the plastic, the coloring within the plastic gets faded to the point, and the owners, you know, want to do some sort of touch-up, and we're like, at this point, you kind of need to replace the whole thing to keep it looking nice. Is there another way to talk about if you're addressing more than a percentage of the sign in terms of repair? You know, you know what I'm saying, trying to come up with, so we're not dealing with dollars, dollar signs, we're looking at?
Actually, we discussed that, and the easy, I don't want to speak for every P&amp;Z member on this, but we kind of concluded as a group that dollars were the easiest, most concrete way. How do you determine 25% of a sign is worn out?
Well, I know, that's why I'm putting this up there.
500 to 2,500?
Well, Wes, Wes just threw out 2,500, and I don't remember who else said maybe 1,500, but no one was clear, so I used the largest number. The old number was 500. The largest number P&amp;Z discussed was Wes at 2,500. But there was no consensus of P&amp;Z on that amount.
Can we look at our history and see how many times this has been invoked?
So this is a situation where code enforcement comes along and says, "That sign's out of compliance." That's, that's non-conforming?
It can be. Our, our, the owner himself says.
Wants to change or update the sign, right?
Correct.
And then that was going to be my question is, Jackie, do we have any data that says, you know, this is kind of the average of what someone spends on one of these signs or anything like that? I know we've gone through some of that.
Typically speaking, maintenance like this wouldn't be permitted through the front desk. They would call and discuss whether a permit would be required or not, and then would be deferred to the section of the sign ordinance. So there's not really a, a way to, to calculate or put a number on.
And then the other issue is, and I know we've run into this specifically, we've got a non-conforming sign. That norm, non-conforming sign because it's worn out. That norm, non-conforming sign because it's worn out. Because it was prior to adoption. And now the business has to replace the sign because they've got some issue with it. It got cracked or whatever. But now they can't just bring, they can't just fix that sign. Now they gotta basically install a whole new sign that now is in compliance with our whole, with our whole sign ordinance.
Correct.
Correct, if it, if it exceeds that threshold for maintenance or repairs.
Correct. So that's what you're talking about, if somebody.
Asking people to do. I just want to let everybody know that because I know we've gone through that specific situation.
Yeah, you've got, yeah, let's, let's, you were correct. We have a non, an old sign that's non-conforming. It's now, the plastic's so cracked, it's so faded, even the owner says, I gotta fix this. And right now, if the fix is $501, he's got to start over and build a conforming sign. And so the question becomes, what dollar amount will we let him just repair the old non-conforming sign?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, that it needs to be a reasonably higher number. I mean, because.
Yeah, 500, you can't, you can't get the sign company to roll out to your business for 500 bucks. I'm okay with 2,500. I mean, I, I would love to have people who are grandfathered. I know we have fewer and fewer of those, obviously, but I'd love to have them move in, in two compliance with our. But at the same time, we've got businesses to run. And so, I mean, I'm okay with 2,500.
What do you think, Charlie?
Well, I, I have no problem with the 2,500. But we're talking about just repairs, right?
Right, and that's.
Repairs and maintenance.
That would be another question. If the plastics faded on both sides and the lighting unit, and they basically take the plastic out, put the new lighting unit and put plastic in, is that not a new sign? I mean, I'm just trying to play, play the other side of that. Did they not create a new sign that's, you go, well, I just did my, my old sign, except now it's got some different colors on it or whatever?
Any, any physical or visible change of that sign would not, would, staff would not consider, nor do I think code enforcement would consider that maintenance. Sign would have to be an even swap. I mean, a good example, I think, would be the Walgreens wall signs. They've got some of their letters. The, the film on some of their individual letters is broken and they're looking at redoing those. They would have to maintain this threshold in order to be able to repair sections of that sign or bring that, bring those signs into compliance with the sign ordinance. When you start talking about a business who's gonna take down the face of their pole sign and put up a new face and it doesn't resemble identically what is there on site, it, it would not be approved and it would not be considered under this repair and maintenance section.
Right.
Okay.
So that would apply like with updated logos or anything like that as well?
Correct.
So that, so if a company updated the logo, they'd have to go through this new sign compliance?
Yeah, any changes to the sign.
So I remember we did, this off-premises sign, we had to approve because they changed the company name and they changed the logo and stuff a while back, so. Okay. I'm okay with 2,500.
Yeah. Then, the very last one was item 14, the last item on your sign ordinance status report, which is section 90.9.3. And that was the display of a registered trademark. Everyone, I think, except David Ash on P and Z, said if you have a registered trademark, you ought to be able to display it on the sign. And David said, I think that the trademark exception has got to be limited to trademarks used only by the company uniformly in all its advertising. And so, there was not an agreement. Some people said, if it's a trademark, you can use it on P and Z, said it's okay with me. David Ash was, said, I think it's only, you can only use a trademark if it's uniformly used by the company across all of its businesses. So, we need to go one way or another on that or somewhere in between.
Well, I think we had this come up.
Yeah, we did.
In specifics.
Yeah, we did.
Exactly, yeah.
Yes. Correct, that's.
Well, there's another shopping port of Fino as well.
Yeah. And so I think the spirit of it was, hey, look, obviously they've made this, this exception in the past, so why can't they make the exception for us so that it's within our final ordinance? I tend to, again, I'm not voting, but I, this is just discussion, but I tend to kind of lean more towards the way Mr. Ash is thinking on that.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I would, I would agree with that too because that is something that, that we went through in a lot of detail. You know, there was a lot of stuff brought with trademarks, but at the end of the entire discussion, it was, but this is the only one that's used company-wide nationally. And that's the only trademark that really, I think, needs to be represented.
We ran into that with Sam.
Exactly, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, that must've been what I was thinking of.
Being consistent, I think that, that, you know.
What we don't want, what we don't want to have happen is they come along, we had this trademark logo. A lot of companies have lots of trademark logos. And they're basically trying to use this idea that they've got a logo trademarked to bypass our sign ordinance. And just, that's what we're, that's why we're considering this. It's not about shutting the business down or making them. It's, you're basically trying to backdoor a way around our sign ordinance where we've got nice uniformity. Again, sign ordinance is one of the things that keeps Shenandoah beautiful. It makes Shenandoah great for living and great for business. It's because people know we've got a beautiful city and people use signs to find where things are, where to purchase things. So, I mean, I'm, I'm in total agreement with that.
Well, frankly, you're, the manager of Home Depot, the folks from Kite Realty, had no complaint. They, most everyone voiced the opinion that they liked the fact that we don't have sign pollution.
Yeah, that's why businesses want to be here. It's why residents want to be here. It's why developers want to build here. I mean.
And, and one or two also commented that they had asked for some exception and they thought they were treated fairly by P and Z.
Are we eliminating the special exemption process? Is that what we're doing now?
No, we have the same process in place that we did.
But the, the objective is just to know that there is a consistent trademark that's utilized for that company. And it's not one that is only, you know, used by that company in, in some small city somewhere else in the country, so, you know, because that's what we ran into.
Exactly.
You know, they, they brought this plethora of trademarks to us and said, we, we use them all. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, no, I can make that change and that's good. Those are the only issues that, that P and Z left. If anyone has any other questions about the changes P and Z recommended, be happy to address those or.
I'd just like to say, reading through it, it is refreshing to be able to read through this ordinance and, and feel like by the, when you get to the end of it, feel like that you've really got a good feel of what's going on. So you guys have done a fantastic job, you and staff, y'all have done a great job on this. P and Z, appreciate all the work that's been put into it because I know it was a pretty big task.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we didn't have a, that was a discussion only based on the vote. But with that.
I will bring back and make all these changes.
In November.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 11, discussion and possible action to approve fourth quarter budget amendments.
Lisa.
May I, Councils, Councils? These are the fourth quarter for the la, for the budget year 2018, 2019. There are only two. One was the removal of the fire pre-action system and the other one was that Tamino water valve leak repair. So if you have any questions, Joseph's here to answer any specifics as well.
And the fire action was in the server room?
That's correct. That was leftover from when we had E-911 in the back.
Right, okay.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendments.
I have a motion by Councilman McLeod, I have a second by Councilman Gristi. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 12, discussion and possible action to approve payment to the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool for the 2019-2020 year.
Removed.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Braut, I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? And I hate to be the only guy to speak up then, but is there a way that, that, I, I know this isn't, I'm not, I'm not pointing any fingers at all, but did we learn anything out of this to maybe next, in the future, we can try to dial these in a little bit closer? I mean, I know we had some changes in insurance, but maybe requesting quotes a little closer to budget time or?
So they changed the rerate process this year, so that is a main factor. So, you put them in as they're completed and not at year-end like we used to. So it does a prorate it for that year and then they bill you for the following year. So I didn't know that. But I've been working with Jeff, our representative, and he said, once we get close to rerate schedule, when they start doing all their calculations, we'll be more in touch.
Okay.
We also had a turnover. Linda Morvat moved to a different district, so we have a new representative. So we're still kind of working communication out.
Perfect, thank you for looking into that.
That's a good point, Rich. I agree with you.
But thank you for looking into that, Lisa.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion to approve payment passes 5-0. Item 13, discussion and possible action regarding the purchase of a 2020 Chevrolet Police Tahoe and emergency equipment.
I'm sure that we approved the purchase of the 2020 Police Tahoe and emergency equipment.
Have a motion by Councilman Fletcher.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Braut. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item 14, which is the presentation of an MDD report for the month of September. Presentation only.
Council, as mentioned at the last meeting, the bylaws for MDD state that a representative of the board will present a report periodically to council. And we've decided to do it in line with the monthly departmental reports. So it'll be at the second meeting, the council meeting of the month, and it will reflect on the month prior. So, Councilman Raymaker has agreed to present the report in the future since he just now joined MDD. He felt like it was appropriate for that to start next month so he could report as having been there. So that, that made a lot of sense. What you see here is just a very quick snapshot summary of the agenda items for the last month, plus some financials. Now, keep in mind, this is reflecting year-end, September 30th, 2019. As we go forward, you'll see some of those projects in the second page drop down to the carryover and you'll see the current fiscal year projects at the top of the list. So, that adjustment will be made for October. Going forward, I think we're gonna see a bit more sophisticated report. And if you have any questions or if you have any preferences you'd like to see, let us know, please.
Very good, thank you, Kathy. Item 15, discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2019 regular meeting and the October 16th, 2019 special meeting.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Councilman Gristi. I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 16, discussion and possible action to ratify the accounts payable for September 2019.
So.
I have a motion by Councilman Braut.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Moves us to item 17, which is non-action items. Kathy, you want to just run through those?
Sure will. And as we mentioned at the last meeting, the revised purchasing policy allows us to move forward with items that are already approved by council on the budget. And then we advise you that these things are moving forward as non-action items. So, you'll see on the list, I'm happy to go through those if you'd like, verbalize them. Travel Click GES Advertising, that's a CBB item for $60,000. Sewer Collection System Model, the general fund 30% shares, $48,458.50. Water Sewer Impact Fee, general fund 30% shares, $25,000. Water Sewer Rate Study, general fund 30% shares, $40,000. Elevated Water Storage Tank Rehab, the professional services is what was budgeted in the current year at $65,000. Patrol Room Locker Remodel, $18,260.40. Storage Area Network Replacement, that's an IT, item 63,107.41. And again, to reiterate, if there's ever a price or scope change, those will be brought to you for approval.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, with that, we will move to item 18, which is the second citizen forum. Don't believe anybody, sign up? Anybody? No? No? Okay, then we will move to item 19, which is city administrator updates. Kathy, yeah?
I'll be quick. Good news on the right turn lane from Grogan's Military Research, headed westbound. Blile Engineering just advised us that, they met with Commissioner Riley and he likes the plans. He is ready to bid the project as soon as he has the sealed plans from Blile. The estimated start of construction is January 2020, so that'll be a welcome improvement for our citizens.
Great.
November 5th election, City Hall will not be a polling location. The county has consolidated precincts 31 and 75 and the polling location will be at the Windsor Hills HOA Clubhouse. You've seen that location before and that is just off of Highway 242. Typically, the election workers will put a sign out on our door, but just to make sure, we're also posting signs and posting the information to our site and our social media.
Just out of curiosity, who makes that decision?
That's, that's the county.
Who at the county?
And I'm not sure we can.
Commissioner's court, do they vote on that?
And I'm not sure. We can contact the election administrators, find out more.
I know, I know we've asked in the past.
I'm just curious.
Because.
I'm curious what person makes that decision?
We can try and find that out. Reminder, Halloween Safe Street tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. The location is on our website and it's the Loop of Savannah, Enchanted, Hickory Ridge, along with the internal streets of Shenandoah Drive and Blue Ridge. So that's a pretty big area this year. One last thing, the vehicle burglaries are up. Police are advising people to please do not keep firearms in the car because that is what people are looking for. So, weapons in the car or other valuables are easy targets. And finally, it is Councilmember Gristi's birthday today. Happy birthday.
Thanks.
With our new council member, our newest council member, we have a new tradition and we have some cake over here that y'all can grab on your way out. Watch the Astros game.
The rest of us got that.
This is starting a new tradition, right?
All right.
Don't feel, well, don't feel cheated.
Thank y'all so much.
We'll try not to.
Yeah, you can do it here.
Most of y'all are in the, like, early spring, New York, I'm gonna.
Okay, we'll move to council inquiry. We'll start with Councilman Raymaker.
No, nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Councilman Fletcher?
Go Astros.
Go Astros. Councilman Gristi?
Another one's evening, go Astros. I like it.
Mayor President?
I'm gonna spoil it. I've got two. I've got one for you, Mr. Mayor. We've got two P and Z positions terming out at the end of the year. I just want to know if we've got any applications to replace them?
We have one application, is that correct?
So it is on our radar. That's good.
Yeah, but we do, but, but please be sourcing for people.
We are, we are reaching out to a couple of people that you've talked to.
And I've had some conversations with some of the residents on the IDC and what we're doing. And I've talked a little bit with Bill. How are we doing on that? I mean, it's been a rough year, I know.
No, no, no. Well, it's been a rough legislative year. The legislature passed two significant bills that affect the IDC. One has to do with the timing and our ability to issue building permits. We met with the city of Conroe, Willis, ourselves, was it Oak Ridge North? I'm trying to think who. A month or two ago, saying, how are we going to comply with the law? And each of the cities had some good ideas and each were talking about going a little bit divergent ways. And so, we talked through that. Everybody kind of adjusted their thinking and then we've agreed to meet again in November to see how everyone's ideas are working and whether, what's working and what's not. Hopefully then, we'll be able to put together a. Hopefully, then, we'll be able to put together a, to amend the IDC in the building permit area with things that we know work based upon the new legislation. The second one we're all familiar with is House Bill 2439, dealing with exterior cladding on buildings, and one of the reasons we had a board of adjustment meeting tonight. And I believe Mr. Feria mentioned to you that cities across the state are up in arms and upset with this legislation. TML certainly is upset with this legislation. And so, we all are in the phase of debating what to do because we are, if not optimistic, we think there's a possibility the next legislative session might undo all our part of what happened this time.
Two years.
Well, and we're not going to wait two years on the IDC, but to give you an example of what we're talking about, right now, hardy plank under our IDC is not a masonry product. We might decide to go ahead and amend our IDC, leaving the requirements of building materials in our ordinance, but we might decide to move hardy plank into a masonry product. So, like I say, we kind of all came to a halt, and the cities across the state are kind of talking. The last time I talked with TML, I think the consensus of most cities was, we're going to leave our ordinance building material in place in hope that the next legislation, legislative session will bring that back. And so, it's technically gone right now, but would be revived. So with that, those two things, we're moving forward again on the IDC, but we just had to stop and say, what's going on here? And so, we're back on track as close as we can be. We certainly don't want to, in haste, make a bunch of changes and then a year from now make more, another set of changes.
Right, we don't need the practice or the aggravation.
Right, correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Braut?
Yeah, just a reminder, as everybody's been talking, it's, it's election season, it's time to go vote. There's a bunch of very, very important things, both in the state and in the local region, that you need to go vote on. Make your voice heard, please. And as a reminder, this is not a polling location. So be watching our social media and our website for directions to the appropriate polling location. Or you can save yourself all the aggravation and go ahead and get out there and vote early. You've got Thursday and Friday to get that done. So go take care of that. That's all.
Real quickly, and I wasn't going to bring anything up, but somebody, I don't remember it was, made the comment about the auto thefts. Maybe that was you, Kathy, or people breaking into cars. And there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook about this FBI report that came out, about how everything's, you know, going awry. Unfortunately, as usual, things get spun in one direction. That is, in fact, that report was only addressing property thefts from outside of structures. So in other words, it would be basically out of a car. Almost every other crime statistic, and I'm, I'm looking at the city data in front of me, and I had done this at the time, and I wish I had all the information in front of me, almost every other statistic in our city has dropped starting in 2016, including burglaries, which means that's a structure, that's a house or a business, and, and I'm talking about almost in half. So I find it unfortunately not surprising, but disappointing, that people will take one little nugget of information, they'll try to spin it to make it seem like the city is just completely being derailed and falling off into the abyss. And the reality of it is that we're doing better than we ever have as it relates to dealing with crime. So first of all, thank you, Chief, and your staff. I appreciate that. Second of all, for those of you who live here and who are listening and are on YouTube, it's, it's not, nothing could be further from the truth than we live in an unsafe area. We live in arguably unsafe times, period, and I think we have to be more aware of our surroundings than ever before. But this particular area right here is actually getting better year over year as it relates to crime. So let's, let's make sure we get all the facts straight, and let's make sure we look at the whole picture, not just one little piece of information. So again, thank you for, Chief, Kathy, for all that y'all do to keep our city safe, especially as it relates to burglary, since that's, that's, those are our houses, right? And, and our houses aren't getting broken into, so we appreciate that.
That's it, Mayor.
Other than that, thank you. Other than that, Halloween Safe Streets tomorrow night. Can't wait, looking forward to it. Y'all know I love our community events. Thank you, everybody, for coming, not only staff, residents, strategic partners. Appreciate all of y'all being here to try to help, you know, make this a better place to live, work, and play, so. Everybody have a great night. We're going to go to executive session. Please don't feel like you've got to stick around. We are going to go discuss consultation with our attorney on pending litigation on the Tacus lawsuit. We will adjourn for executive session at 8:36. Go Astros.
For those that are wondering, the Astros are ahead by one, the top.